Good evening. This is a continuation of the April 26, 2016 Board of Education meeting. We have seven members present. One board member will have to leave in about one hour. The Board has been in closed session for employment of employee and approval of March 22nd, April 5th, and April 12th, 2016, closed session minutes. Can we rise for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undregaled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have three names on the list for public comments. First one, Michael Crumery.
Want to read some excerpts from a letter that I sent out this morning. Dear Principal Diana Smith, I would like to ask if the teacher for applications in biology class obtained approval from you to show Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles in class this past Friday. Questions to Mr. Mark Golubowski, if I pronounce that properly, I hope. Please review and provide answers to the following questions. Exactly how does this movie provide any educational benefit to the students for the science curriculum? Was the movie presented with closed captioning? If no, why not? My son is hearing impaired, wears a cochlear implant, and it's in his IEP that any movies have closed captioning. Will the exam test for the Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles movie be multiple choice, fill-in-the-blank, essay, or a combination of all three? Will a pre-test be sent home that I can review with my son Nikolai to help him prepare for the exam? What percentage of the total class grade does this assignment represent? Have other movies or TV shows been presented in the applications biology classroom during the 25-2016 school year? If yes, please provide listing and dates shown. Please provide a detailed class syllabus for the applications in biology class for the spring 2016 semester. That request was made because on March 15th, the instructor for that class was on medical leave, so a replacement teacher was hired, Nick Metcalf, to handle the rest of the school year. So if he has gone off of what was previously presented in the syllabus or has no syllabus as a parent, I would like to know that. I did get a call from Mr. Mark Golubowski. I don't remember the exact time. I'm guessing it was noon, 1:00-ish. And the summary of the communication that he provided was that the movie was a reward for completing the topic of genetics in class. Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles movie, a reward to the students on the topic of genetics. I find that totally inappropriate and unacceptable as a parent. I would also like to add that next year for Halloween costumes, if the students show up with four-foot-long swords or nunchucks, that they say that they got that inspiration from their science teacher, that they will not be disciplined for having an inappropriate costume on school grounds. Thank you.
My daughter is a student at York and receives special education programming and services. She had a special education substitute teacher, Nick Metcalf, substituting for Don Vanna, the York Special Ed Vocational Instructor Coordinator, for nearly the entire second semester as Mr. Vanna was out on medical leave. Mr. Vanna teaches students vocational skills in a block of time during seventh and eighth period. During that time, Mr. Metcalf substituted for Don Vanna, I discovered that my daughter had watched movies a number of times, the vocational part of her school day. This semester, under Mr. Metcalf, she watched Flicka, a movie about a horse; Igor, a children's animated movie described as "a twist on the classic monster movie." The animated movie Open Season was viewed about wildlife animals turning the tables on hunters to make the woods safe. And she multiple times watched the TV series Undercover Boss, where bosses dress in disguise and trick and spy on their employees so they can find out what's happening in the business they're in charge of. And then they reward select employees with huge gifts and cash in dreamlike windfalls. My daughter has a communication impairment and arrives home every day with a communication sheet indicating what she worked on or participated in school. I insisted on this communication sheet. If I hadn't, one would have never been created. I recently viewed those communication sheets, and there were at least 11 occasions this semester where it was noted that my daughter watched either a video or a movie during her vocational block during seventh and eighth period. And on some of those occasions, I noted that they were in sequential days. There may have been occasions where video or movie watching occurred but wasn't noted or the communication sheet didn't come home that day. Some of the notes indicated a video about the workplace or jobs, but some of the notes about movies or videos had zero to do with vocational skills. One note said, quote, "watched a funny movie." I also went through the first semester's daily communication sheets and saw on six occasions, it was noted that my daughter watched a movie during her vocational time block. It was described as "reward movie," and that was noted a few times. Vocational movie was noted once, and Flicka again was noted. The first semester was when Don Vanna, the vocational instructor, was in his position. In hindsight, I should have emailed to ask for an explanation and express my displeasure. I don't think I understood what an ongoing problem it was. When I read the daily sheets, it would catch my attention, but I wasn't putting two and two together. It is now only after having reviewed the daily communication sheets that I realize how often this movie video watching occurred. I think what is happening is teachers are conferencing in a meeting or planning or grading at this time, and I don't know what else. I think this movie watching is taking the place of substitute teachers, even as a substitution for a substitute teacher. I think another special ed teacher may poke their head in the classroom so certified special education teacher compliance can be claimed. This movie watching is unacceptable. I am concerned it's systemic, and I think it reflects a culture of acceptance within York Special Education that this is okay and normal. No more movies like Flicka, Igor, Open Season, Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles, and Undercover Boss during special ed programming or instruction time at York High School.
My name is Brian Bresnahan, and I live at 253 South Grace. I am speaking this evening as chairman of the Foundation of District 205, and tonight we are asking the Board to approve gifts of a total of $84,117. $80,000 of funding goes to support themes, educational grants, and study skills academies. These grants help deliver curriculum, enhance education, allow teachers to pilot innovative programs, and bring extra resources into their classroom, as well as engage our community. Our study skills academies provide academic and organizational support to those students that need help outside of the classroom. This program is about student growth, helping to raise the bar and close the achievement gap. Additionally, the Foundation is proud of the partnership program which we are involved with. This evening, we are asking for approval of a very generous gift of $4,127 to support the York Distinguished Alumni Program. The positive impact that both the York students and recipients receive by bringing them together is truly remarkable. Out of this program, an exciting movement to create the York Alumni Association has developed. We are also proud of our contributions to the mobile learning implementation that resulted in Chromebook carts for the middle schools and Chromebook devices for the York students. We want to thank our partners, the York Student Enrichment Team, for distributing the financial assistance we provided to those students and families in need. On behalf of the Foundation Board of Directors, I want to take this time to publicly thank the administration, staff, Board of Education, and teachers for their support and participation, which makes delivery and implementation of these programs possible. Most importantly, I want to thank all of the donors for their loyal and invaluable support. None of this can happen without you. In the past several years have shown a great increase in community support, which enables us to increase our impact in the education of District 205 students and the Elmhurst community. We are extremely grateful for this support and hope that you will continue to partner with us in our fundraising efforts and our dedication to innovations in education and the advancement of educational excellence in Elmhurst Public Schools. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments tonight? Hearing none, we'll move to reorganization of the Board of Education. First item is election of president. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education elect Shannon Ebner as president.
I'll second.
Moved by Emily, seconded by John. Any discussion? Oh, sorry, any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. Okay, the motion passes. Election of vice president.
I move that the Board of Education elect Jim Collins as vice president.
Second.
I second.
Okay, are there any other nominations for vice president? Hearing none, Jim Collins will be vice president. Election of secretary.
I move we elect Karen Stufen, Secretary of the Board of Education.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Chris. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, Karen will be secretary. Establishment of regular meeting schedule. The board members have a chance to look at the meeting schedule for the next year. There was, oh, go ahead, go ahead. Okay, yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to state it. So there is one date that's an error. It's going to be January 24th instead of January 22nd. And one of our dates is also February 14th. But we can work on that later. But January 24th will be the meeting rather than the 22nd for January in 2017. Any other comments on dates? Okay, then the meeting schedule is established. Board committee appointments. We don't have too many changes for board committee appointments. Board Improvement Committee members will remain the officers. Learning and Teaching Committee, there'll be one change. It will be Emily, Margaret, and Jim. And for Finance, Chris, John, and Karen. Performance Management will remain the same. And Policy, Lend, IASB, they'll remain the same. And then Lazada Museum Representative will change to Karen for the upcoming year, starting in May. City Park School Representatives, Emily and John. Okay, any discussion on the appointments?
I just want to net it out. Really, the change is Emily and John are swapping from Finance and Learning and Teaching. So if it's just a clear way of saying it to share with people who don't know it as intimately as us.
Hearing none, we'll move to approval of board meeting minutes. There are three sets of minutes, March 22nd, April 5th, and April 12th, 2016. Are there any comments about meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none, the minutes will stand as presented. Superintendent's Consent Agenda, we have items A through W. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, I ask that we remove the item O, Approval of Educational Alignment Study, from the Superintendent's Consent Agenda.
Okay, is there a motion to approve items A through N and P through W?
I move that we approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, items A through N and P through W.
Is there a second? Okay, moved by John, seconded by Jim. Go ahead. Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Bestido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner? Yes. Seven Is, no Nays. Those items pass. Item O, is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve a purchase services contract with White and Company in the amount of $32,350 plus reimbursement expenses up to $500. The $12,750 amount associated with a model classroom project would be expended only if the Foundation supports the additional cost associated with the project.
Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by Emily. Is there discussion?
Yes, I actually am asking this to be taken off of the consent agenda as a separate item so that we can give some background as to how this came up, what initiated it. And it's basically as a result of the Focus 205 community efforts, and it's just a piece that we have to do some research on. Dave, do you want to share more?
Certainly. So, the Focus 205 that was sanctioned by the Board and supported by the Board last spring included a phase that would have building assessments of our current educational classrooms. At the time when it was approved, the assessment was probably a little bit, I don't want to say vague, but the exact nature of how this process was going to unfold wasn't completely known, but we knew that we were going to need to do some building assessments to get to the facilities portion of the project. And that was always in the original scope of the plan. But as we went through the first phase, which included the community engagement sessions, then it started to become clearer what the educational priorities were for the districts that we wanted our facilities to support. So as we got to the planning phase for what we wanted these building assessments to identify and what type of information we wanted to get from them, that started to occur in January and February of this year. And so when that became more clear, that's when we needed to get a proposal for the scope of the work and the cost of the work to be done to support that phase of the project because at that point it became more clear what the actual work was that we were looking for. So when we got that proposal, Frank Shu, our facilities director, was in contact with White and Company, which has, you know, kind of been, we've had a relationship with them as architects in this district. And one of the things that they have seen be effective and helpful to districts is this concept of a model classroom type of prototype where you identify what you actually would be looking for at various different grade level spans in terms of what type of furniture, what type of classroom arrangements, what type of technology support, and all of these different kinds of things that support the achievement objective. So it's not just a facility concept, but kind of an interrelated concept. So what we did is we took their advice and we held a model classroom activity that included teachers, administrators, community members that have been involved in supporting requests from PTA donations, foundation donations, the Focus 205 reps, a variety of different people were involved. And it was an extremely productive afternoon, and a lot of excitement, a lot of buzz came out of that. And teachers were really, you know, telling us, this is what we really would like to see in an ideal world for what a classroom would be to support instruction for our students. And so we wanted to develop that so that in the future, as we get into future capital outlay purchases, any types of future facility concepts for the district, we had some type of guideline to work off so that we had, we're calling it a prototype or a model, of what different types of things we wanted to support and what type of direction we wanted to move. And so we had asked the Foundation to support that, and if they do agree to do that, and the executive director of the Foundation was at this activity, you saw her picture up there, if they do agree to support that, we want to be able to move as quickly as possible so that we can order the furniture, because furniture can take a while to come in, and also do the work over the summer so that these classrooms are ready at the beginning of the fall. And then as we pilot this and as we move through this process and learn from it, then we can be better prepared going into the future for future teacher requests and future long-term capital planning. So that's the essence of kind of the Part Two Model Classroom. The Part One was kind of always a part of the original concept of Focus 205. It's just that we, as we moved through the process in the fall, we needed some time to get to the point where we knew what type of a building analysis we were really looking for so that we could get accurate quotes for what that would actually entail. And I did ask Michelle to encourage some teachers and administrators and people who participated in this activity to come here tonight, and I think it would be very enlightening if any of them would be willing to actually share their thoughts on what we did last week.
So we do have some of them here with us tonight. I did talk to them. Are they still back there? We have Darwin Straylo is a kindergarten teacher from Fisher. We have Cecilia Dunn is a third-grade teacher at Lincoln, and Jane Bailey, principal of Fisher. If you guys can come up to the podium. And I've asked them, there's no, you know, formal presentation for you. We want them to talk to you about what you're viewing. You can see that, there's Cecilia right there on the screen. So if they could talk through the activity and what it means for their classroom and for their students. Oh, I'm sorry, Jackie DiCipio is here too, from Brian.
Don't all jump on it at once. It was really an exciting afternoon. I think when we look at what we hope to become and then go back to our buildings and see kind of where we are, we're pretty rigid, traditional, inflexible kinds of classrooms. So we have children and desks and chairs and a classroom table and a table for guided reading. Specific areas, yes, but not the flexibility that maybe we hope for when we use technology. So one of the things White did with us, and it's right there on the screen right now, fascinating, they had pictures of all kinds of classroom arrangements, from creative and exciting to strange, like, what is that? But then to kind of try to conceptualize your space. So at Fisher, we're looking at possibly the kindergarten room. Well, the kindergarten room is trapezoid tables and six chairs. It is one kind of arrangement. Little kids can't even reach across to get the markers out of the basket that's in the center. They're just not big enough. And so they proposed all kinds of creative uses of tables and even soft furniture, things that we haven't even considered. But can't you see kids taking an iPad or Chromebooks over to some soft seating and plan a project or do a game together in a collaborative fashion? Because certainly what businesses are saying, we want highly collaborative workers for the future. Well, we're working on doing that in the classrooms, without a doubt, but in very rigid fashion. So you sit at your desk and I sit at mine and we talk. Not quite what we hope to see in a future-ready classroom. Okay? Anybody else?
So I was really excited after leaving the meeting on Wednesday. And Thursday after school, I talked to my husband into meeting my classroom, and we moved all of my furniture around. He wasn't too happy, but I'm really excited about the new layout. And it was based on some of the concepts that we had talked about Wednesday afternoon. And my kids walked in Friday and said, what did you do? But they were really excited. We have one large area that we've always kind of had, but it's been in the corner of the room, and now it's right up front, right center, where we can all meet together on our big carpet, some of those traditional ideas, but really trying with what furniture we have to incorporate these new ideas. And so there have been some exciting things that my students really love, some things that haven't worked so well, given the furniture that we do have and the space that we have. But I really see lots of opportunities that are open to us.
I am Darwin Straylo, and the Full Day Kindergarten at Risk teacher at Fisher. And to be honest, when I went, I had no idea what this was about. I was, you know, the presentation was about two and a half hours long, and it flew by so fast. I actually didn't want it to end because I wanted to see what else there was that they were going to show us. And the pictures that we saw of the furniture, the different layouts that could possibly be in our school, the places that they've already redone that, you know, and the other schools are experiencing, I was jealous. I was amazed that these things even existed. I had no idea that furniture, it just made a lot of sense, furniture on wheels that you could easily move to make more space. The kids had special places that they could go to feel more comfortable, to work in collaborative groups, to work one-on-one with a teacher, to work in small groups for guided reading, or maybe instead of having them being pulled out of the classroom, having the resource teachers come into the classroom, which is going to be more beneficial to the children, and having their own little areas but still be incorporated in the classroom. I found that there was really creative ideas that they had, just with furniture, with having like a whiteboard that's attached to the desks that could be removed or turned, where I could sit next to a kid and/or the small group and work with them instead of just being up on the board where they can't see or they can't copy down things because it's just too hard for a five-year-old. but just making our space a lot more friendly to any age. And since I have a lot of the special ed or the at-risk kids that don't have the experiences that a lot of other kids have, this space and the furniture that would be used for them would really help them with their communication skills and also just in general, just the learning environment. So it's good.
I can echo everything that everyone else kind of talked about. At the middle school table though, we had a very candid conversation on how the environment can really impact instruction. And we had conversations about to truly be able to differentiate and to personalize instruction at the middle school level, how important that environment is and how flexible furniture and incorporating technology really play an additional role in a teacher's world. So we had a lot of good conversations about, as we moved from sixth grade to eighth grade, about giving students more choice and more control in their learning and how a teacher can really structure an environment with the proper resources to do that. So I know at our table, the teachers are really excited to have their input and be able to brainstorm and look at different environments. And I think they're really appreciative to be able to offer some input and feedback in that. So it was, I agree with that. It was a really exciting day. So.
Do you want to say anything?
No, obviously, the teachers always are reluctant to leave their class because they want to be with the kids. But we thought this was really important. And, you know, the reports that got back to me was, there was a lot of buzz at grade level meetings, building level meetings, there was a lot of excitement generated. You know, people are really looking forward to the opportunity to start to move in this direction with the future-ready concepts. And it's a really, it's transformational when you see it come alive as opposed to just kind of talking about it. And when the teachers were in the room together, you could kind of see it starting to come alive. And that was fun.
Thank you. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Any other discussion for item O? Okay. Is it a roll call vote? Okay. Okay, so all in favor of?
I've got a roll call.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead, go ahead. Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays. That motion passes. Moving to the superintendent's agenda action items, themes instructional grants.
Well, the first thing I would like to do before anybody makes any motions or we get into any of the items is just make sure we take the, or at least that I take the opportunity to thank the foundation. These people volunteer their time and are very concerned about our school district. They're caring. They are very passionate about wanting what's best for our school district. And they work very hard. They don't get a lot of credit. And so we are certainly appreciative of all the support. As Brian indicated, they were able to support us to the tune of $84,000 this year, I believe was approximately the amount. No, the grants are $58,000. I think, right? Is that correct? Okay. So I apologize. But that's a significant amount. Plus, the amount of money that was raised at the gala that was dedicated to specific resources for ELA was significant, and that's even above and beyond this amount. So really appreciative. So certainly encourage you to support this. And the money obviously goes directly to classrooms, directly to teachers, so.
Motion.
I make the motion that the Board of Education approve the award of funds for the 2016 themes grants totaling $58,490 as funded by the District 205 Foundation.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Jim. Is there a board discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you again. I'm sure we would all, if we had the chance. But really, what Dr. Moyer said was right, that the 205 Foundation, the work they do is, it's just amazing. And I feel like they're always laser-focused on, you know, what direction the district's heading, even ahead of the district. And they don't receive enough recognition, attention, thank you, because the amount of hours they put in and the money they raise and the grants they give, all the work they do, it's just such an asset to our district. And honestly, I didn't know a lot about the foundation before I became a board member. And every year that I'm on the board, I just appreciate them more and their work. And I know a lot of the members are here. And Brian, thank you. You are a great spokesman for the group. But thank you, guys.
Nothing further to add. She said it all. I just want to echo it. Thank you very much. It's great to live in a community that can produce an organization, a grassroots organization that supports their schools in such an amazing way and does it in an innovative function as she said, laser-focused. And so thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays. That motion passes. Next is the approval of purchase of staff laptops, student Chromebooks, and Chromebook cases and carts.
This was essentially presented at Finance Committee, Learning and Teaching, the last presentation on MLI. So this isn't really new information, it's just the approval process.
Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve and authorize the superintendent or the superintendent's designee to purchase laptops, Chromebooks, and cases from Dell Inc. and Chromebook carts from Troxel Communications, Inc., not to exceed $465,000 in purchase price.
There's a second. A second? Okay, moved by Emily, seconded by Margaret. Any discussion? Do you want to go ahead, Dave?
Yes, I know there was a question. I appreciate the question about the process for making the device decision, so I thought I'd just summarize briefly. If you have other questions, please let me know. But basically, annually, my team visits an area, a vendor north of here that has a device showcase where they invite about eight to 10 different manufacturers to come, device manufacturers. We attend that every year. Excuse me. We've got a lot of information to ask vendors questions. We usually get samples. So this year, we had samples from Acer, HP, Lenovo, and Dell, that we actually physically get multiple samples to touch and feel and pass around. We showed some teachers different options and we talked with them. And then I, in addition, surveyed some local districts on what they're using, what their feedback was on devices. We got feedback from 13 different districts in the Chicagoland area and the DuPage and King counties. So we learned about their experiences with different types of devices, the breakage rates of, you know, because that's something that obviously one-to-one districts have to cope with that. And every district really honestly has that same issue. And then we look at pricing. We look at a number of features and things, but we also look at pricing. So we obtained quotes from three vendors in this case, CDWG, Netrix, and Dell. So once we compile all this information and we meet and talk and we try to work out what's the best solution or the best option for District 205. So there is a lot of background work that goes into it, and I apologize for not summarizing that detail in the rationale. I think maybe in the future, I'll provide a little bit more detail so that the information's available to everybody. So if you have any questions, just let me know.
The buyback. I think that was something that everybody was curious about, how that's going to work, because it was one of the things that was, you know, when the fees came out last summer, everybody was curious about.
So that component of the recommendation. So, sir, so actually, branching into elementary this year, this coming year with one-to-one, we looked, we were hoping to be able to use some of the Chromebooks that we would purchase from the seniors, the graduating seniors, and use them, leverage them within the district somehow. And we surveyed the seniors and got a feel for how many seniors felt like they would sell their Chromebooks back to the district. And that seems to be enough to cover at least the quantity that would be needed for the fourth grade deployment. So we're also going to be, so we plan on using those. They will be one-year-old Chromebooks. We plan on using the ones that are in good condition, obviously. Or if they need a little bit of touch-up, we'll handle that. So we're going to redeploy those Chromebooks for next year in, within, actually, they might be within either middle school or elementary school for use by students. And then also, we will be leveraging some of the laptop carts that we'll be freeing up, because fifth grade and fourth grade will be essentially replacing laptops with Chromebooks. So we're going to use some of those carts also to hold Chromebooks, some of the Chromebooks that we're using. So we're actually leveraging senior Chromebooks that we're buying back and existing laptop carts within the district to deploy Chromebooks next year. So it's going to, I think it's going to help quite a bit.
Okay, hearing none. Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays. That motion passes. Item C. Do you want to take that?
Go ahead.
Right, it's routine. Okay, so this is approval of resolution of appointment to the DuPage Area Occupational Education System, D-A-O-E-S. Is there a recommendation? Go ahead.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the resolution of appointment to DuPage Area Occupational Education System, D-A-O-E-S, Board of Directors, which appoints Mr. David Beatty, STEM Coordinator, to serve as its representative for the 2016-2017 school year.
A second. Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by Emily. Any discussion? Okay, so that's a resolution. Okay, go ahead. Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays. That motion passes.
Item C. Do you want to take that?
Go ahead.
Right, it's routine. Okay, so this is approval of resolution of appointment to the DuPage Area Occupational Education System, D-A-O-E-S. Is there a recommendation? Go ahead.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the resolution of appointment to DuPage Area Occupational Education System, D-A-O-E-S, Board of Directors, which appoints Mr. David Beatty, STEM Coordinator, to serve as its representative for the 2016-2017 school year.
A second. Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by Emily. Any discussion? Okay, so that's a resolution. Okay, go ahead. Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays. That motion passes. Item D, approval of the School Association for Special Education in DuPage County, SACID, Board of Control Appointment Resolution, and Governing Board Appointment Resolution.
Well, I would just say this is related to the reorganization. So it's slightly different structure. We would appoint a representative every year, but this is slightly different, but it's related to information you were presented when you passed the original resolution. We just have a deadline to appoint the actual representatives.
Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolutions, appointing David Moyer as representative and Karen Stufen as alternate to the SACID Board of Control, and John McDonough as representative, and Karen Stufen as alternate to the SACID Governing Board.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, moved by Emily, seconded by Margaret. Is there a discussion? Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays. The motion passes. We have two donations, one from York and one from Field. We'll start with the donation from York.
Okay, York, as the resolution indicates, Mrs. Virginia Owens has offered to donate $3,000 to Boys Lacrosse. And Mrs. Tamara Lee Conrady has offered to donate $2,000 to York Badminton. And so the lacrosse donation is for equipment, transportation costs, and the badminton donation is for warm-ups for the varsity team.
Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education accept, approve acceptance of the two donations, $3,000 for lacrosse supplies and $2,000 for badminton supplies. These donations are accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second.
Moved by Margaret, seconded by Jim.
I want to extend a special thank you to the two parents, Mrs. Virginia Owens and Ms. Tamara Lee Conrady, for this generous donation to ensure that these sports can continue to move forward and have the supplies and equipment that are needed. Thank you very much to the parents.
Okay. Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays. The motion passes. We have approval of a donation at Field School.
Okay, wobble chairs just provide students with the opportunity to build some movement in when they're doing certain types of classwork. And some students in particular tend to benefit from that. There's some brain research, some learning research about building movement into classrooms, and this is just a type of furniture that allows for that. And the PTA at Field is interested in making that donation in the amount of $1,500.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation from the Field School PTA in the amount of $1,500 to purchase wobble chairs. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Jim. Go ahead.
Again, I just want to say thank you to the Field School PTA. Familiar with that organization in my past. And like the foundation, they really are committed to their schools and willing to step up and help out. And I'm really curious what these wobble chairs look like. I'd like to see the kids using them. So hopefully, we'll get a chance to see that. Maybe we could bring them here.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays. The motion passes. We have one item coming out of closed session, employment of employee. It's approval of elementary assistant principal position.
I move that the Board of Education approve the reorganization of the Learning and Teaching Department and approve the hiring of an assistant principal to be shared between Hawthorne and Lincoln Elementary Schools.
I'll second. Moved by Jen, seconded by Shannon. Is there any discussion? Do you want to give some background to the rationale?
Yeah, we had an elementary assistant principal position previously in the district. And some of the rationale behind this is that we want to kind of move capacity to the building level just because of the increasing demands that we have now in terms of supervising classroom instruction, the new ELA approach to instruction, the professional learning communities model, the new teacher evaluation instruments, and the fact that in some of our buildings, building principals- the building level just because of the increasing demands that we have now in terms of supervising classroom instruction, the new ELA approach to instruction, the professional learning communities model, the new teacher evaluation instruments, and the fact that in some of our buildings, building principals get so compromised with managerial types of tasks that it's difficult, difficult for them to allocate their time the way they would like to and the way we would like them to, to really truly focus on the instructional programming. And so Ms. Chester's done a terrific job for us, and she will help us transition to a new model of reorganizing how we handle certain functions over the period of the next two years, is what's something that we're proposing, that we will come back to you at a later date so that there is a transition plan in place, I guess is my point. But we want to use this opportunity to try to get the capacity to the building level and work directly with teachers and students, and that's, that's the general principle behind this. And we think that it is, that we have a plan in place to manage it. We think there's, you know, obviously, pros and cons to everything, but at this particular stage where we're at, we think we could best use our people in a capacity where we get them in, in daily contact with the teachers and the students and support our principals in that capacity. And also, I would say that these functions and duties that they do also help us build some capacity for future succession, you know, planning, administrative pipeline kinds of things. So there's, there's multiple reasons and different, different reasons why we think there are some benefits to this, and we would ask that you, and those are essentially delineated in, in your, your packet, but I'm, I'm reiterating them here at the meeting, and we would ask that you support that.
Are you none? We'll, we'll take a vote.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Okay, that's seven i's, no n's. The motion passes. We have superintendent's communication.
Okay, seven Freedom of Information Act requests were received, two requesting information regarding student/teachers which, which were granted, three requesting specific student data, one of which was granted, two of which were denied, one requesting employee information which was granted, one requesting courses offered at York which was granted. And then I'm going to defer on the next item to Dr. Kostak to give us an update on transition center planning for the 2016-17 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Moyer. I had posted, or actually asked Mrs. Walsh to post a memo to the Board of Education outlining and detailing some of the activities, which we typically start planning for that next year, late December, early January. I trust that you've had an opportunity to peruse that. I don't want to read it verbatim, but I will just review a couple highlights. One, in terms of the enrollment, we're looking at a 31 enrollment at this point that still has actually the possibility to just go down. There's still two students that were in flux. Those IEP meetings continue well throughout the school year, sometimes even into the summer, for some of our students in our private facilities. There are times when a student that's been in a private facility throughout the K-12 experience or part of the K-12 experience returns to the transition center, and that would be the same this year. So we monitor that throughout the year. So what we've confirmed, and we've also included any students that we've anticipated, so that would be the high number, the 31. This, the next thing on there is talking about the, the leases we know that goes through twen, summer of 2017, and that will be a part of the community engagement processes. The focus 205 group studies all of the facilities and what we want to do beyond next school year. There are certainly a lot of advantages to that current location in terms of access to the community for the students and employment, which we really enjoy and has worked well for the programming. This current school year, again, we're keeping track of all of that, not just for the transition, but any of our levels and our, all of our students in terms of staffing patterns in special education. And we always build in a little flexibility, particularly with the younger students where you see more initial evaluations occur throughout the school year, and there are times when we adjust that FTE. For example, this past school year, we added some to Jefferson in the middle of the year just because they had a couple of students move in, some initial case studies, and it really pushed that need in January. So we always build in that flexibility as well. So this current school year, knowing we had a few more students this year, there were a couple of things we wanted to address. One was keeping our caseloads consistent with what they had been, as well as providing some increased flexibility for the vocational coordinator by having a fourth licensed staff member. This year, that's already been built in, and that will continue next year as well. The Related Services is a little bit different. We look at every student-specific IEP at that site, and then we staff accordingly. So again, as those IEP meetings are done, particularly with the OTPT, I work with a SACID coordinator. That's, all of our OTP services come through our SAS, our relationship with SACID. So the coordinator and I work on assigning those different individuals. So some of those individuals, they try to keep consistency in who has been working with the students, especially the students with more complex needs. The social work support is looking like at a point two, the equivalent of a point two. Although it's the equivalent of one day a week, it's not sure how that will be scheduled because we need to look at when the students are available as well. So that may look at more part days, and that will come out of the existing social work FTE. The same with the speech and language. We're just about done with that. Last year, we finished it about the middle of May. The students move around, yet our overall number of students receiving speech and language has declined. So when we look at even if there's an increase of minutes, we can support that within the existing FTE. And that fluctuates, probably of all the things, that fluctuates the most, particularly at the elementary level. Again, we're young, you see more younger students receiving those services and also exiting those services more frequently as they're addressing some of the higher incidents, which would be articulation and so forth. The next thing is the nurse, and tonight you approved the overall school nurse contract for Elmhurst, or with Elmhurst Asworth Hospital. And knowing that we had met back in February, and we built in, we made some other changes, and we built in knowing that we would need a full-time nurse at the transition center. So that was in tonight's contract. The educational assistance is also very transient. Again, we look at each student's IEP. We are anticipating an increase in the transition center again, but as the students are moving around, our total number of students hasn't changed, just their physical location. So we'll be able to support that within the existing FTE. We've already been working on some things since this last winter with David Smith, and his department has assisted us in, in, again, with technology, not only maintaining what we have, but looking at some different technology, some touchboards. We trialed them. The staff has liked them, so we did go ahead and purchase those early this winter. And the, the space that we have currently, as I said, has a lot of advantages that we look for in terms of programming. The busiest time of day is the start of the school year, when all the kids, students are present and all the staff, before they start leaving to go to the job sites. So that's the time, the staff is currently looking at each student's schedule for next year, and will make a decision whether they're going to look at an alternate space. Right now, their preference is to see if we can reconfigure the existing space with some minor construction adjustments, and we'll make that decision before, probably before even the end of the school year. Which leads to the final paragraph of that. One of the reasons we want to meet with the parents a little later is we've had more specific information about what, what the transition center staff would like to do in terms of the programming, and particularly in that start of the day. And then just the last detail would be, which has also been in the works, we'll be seeing that before the board shortly with the specs for the purchase of the additional van that is needed. Even though the number of students has changed, is relatively the same, there are, with the increase of students in, that are in a wheelchair, we'll need another van. Any questions that I could clarify or respond to?
Could you, I think it's in the last paragraph, some of the communication that is going out to parents. Can you summarize the communication piece?
Sure. We sent a letter to the 31 prospective parents at that time. A few, two that were in flux, but we invited, we let them know anyway that we plan to, based on concerns that parents had brought forth to the Board of Education and myself and Dr. Moyer as well, that we will be meeting with them a little later in the spring or very early summer. As you can see here, we still have some planning that we're doing, which is not atypical, you know, in terms of our process, and that we would meet with them. Also, it would give them an opportunity to meet Mrs. Deluga, and in particular, Ms. Delarosa, the new assistant principal that oversees student services.
Okay, is there anything else? I guess there's no approval for this. It's just, it's an update, right?
Correct.
All right.
The next item, I would turn over to Chris Welton. And again, this is information that, that you've seen, but we're at, at a point now where we need to start making decisions and get ready for closing up this school year and getting the next school year off the ground. So, related to the York bookstore.
This is just an update. We, the plan is to have a recommendation at the, the next board meeting, May 10th. I'm not going to go through all of the document here, but it, it talks a little bit about the background and the history. The York bookstore has operated in the, the same fashion for many years. And some of the process is not as automated or up-to-date. We use cash registers and a lot of manual operations, rubber stamps on the books and that sort of thing. There's, there's no computerized point-of-sale or barcoding system or, or automated textbook inventory system. The bookstore manager retired last month. She's been, she had worked in the bookstore for over 25 years. And the textbook industry is changing. So the bookstore, bookstore operations are changing from, from more of a print to a digital. So the, so the industry is changing. So the RFP to, for bookstore management services was an opportunity, or is an opportunity to bring in some experience and knowledge in the procurement of digital resources, possibly moving more towards from an in-person transaction system to hopefully more of, more online transactions, not, not everything immediately, web store, online, but, but a process to move in the direction of more online transactions. Evaluating the current markup and buyback formulas, you have some knowledge and experience with, with that, looking into different ways to, to have rental or fees related to, to textbooks, just having more knowledge and experience bookstore operations in that area. Not, not changing anything right away, but just if you have some expertise in bookstores, you know, to, 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 once they get in, in, in there and working, you know, to, to use their background experience to help make suggestions for improving efficiencies and so forth in the bookstore. So we are, there, we've received the, the timeline. We published in the newspaper. We've had, we've had, we've answered questions from several vendors. We did a tour of the bookstore operation. We opened two proposals from vendors. We're going to interview the two companies on Thursday and hopefully evaluate the proposals and come up with a recommendation for the May 10th board meeting.
Also on May 10th board meeting, which is somewhat by design and somewhat by coincidence, so I'll say it's 50, you know, like partially luck and partially planning, the York administration is going to present to us their long-range plan that they've developed, or I shouldn't say long-range, but multi-year plan that they've developed to continue moving along the spectrum from traditional textbooks to open resources, dynamic resources. I'm not sure, Michelle calls them a different name every time we talk, but you get the idea, so.
I'll just throw an acronym to it.
No, don't do that. Don't do that, not tonight. You, you get your chance next, next time. So you'll, you'll hear, hear a little bit about what we anticipate that's going to look like over the next couple of years as well, next time.
And just chatting with Chris about this, there are a couple of just really interesting aspects of this. One is just the ability to get to kind of an online store model, where they bring the technology, the equipment, we don't have to buy anything. So it's a model that doesn't require our investment, but brings that expert, that, that capability, the solution in whole. And then the second piece was something that was very intriguing, which was just, and I think Chris mentioned this, is the, the ability of these folks and their expertise and experience in procurement of digital text to work with the educators and the teachers in selecting and procuring texts, helping them understand what's out there, how best to get it, and they hopefully can also, you know, provide an additional resource and accelerate our transition into the electronic book space. So I think those are two very interesting aspects of a potential relationship with a vendor.
Thanks. Thanks to Kathy too, for the update. Okay, board communications.
I have one communication, and I know we've had some discussion about this, and some actions have been taken, but just want to kind of bring it up, and hopefully, we'll have some time to talk about some of the actions that were taken. There was a parent survey that went out in the, for the middle school students, and there was some concern on what the actual comments were, and the intent of the comments was to make sure that all middle school students could, all middle school parents taking this survey could provide any feedback, whether it was related to the particular recommendations that were noted or any other recommendations. So there was some potential mix-up on how that was worded, and we've had that conversation. And I know the district took some actions to make sure to clarify that mix-up, and maybe I'll just stop and let the district talk about a little, a couple of the things that they have done on that.
Well, yeah, I, we, um, there may have been some, some level of miscommunication or maybe an attempt to address a concern, and maybe it was not addressed in the same way some people anticipated. But we did want to leave the opportunity for people to make open comments and not just have it be a completely closed survey, so, but we also felt it was important that we got feedback on the specific results of that particular survey. So there are going to be additional opportunities for input and involvement as it relates to the middle school task force process going forward. When the parent survey results are finalized and we can include them in the full report of the study, and when that gets posted publicly online, we will have a site that actually keeps people updated in as close to real time as possible on what work is going on. And one of the things that we'll include on that site is the opportunity for just general comments that they want the middle school task force to consider throughout the planning phases for any potential changes. the planning phases for any potential changes. We also talked about some other different types of opportunities for parent input, and we will have a meeting at the middle school, with the middle school task force next week, and a report on the work that's been done with the middle school task force to date at the May 10th board meeting, and we're going to try to give you some general ideas of what we think next steps look like. We may not have, it may not be as specific at this point as it can be maybe in another couple of meetings, because we still are trying to make sure we take into account the parent feedback and other things like that, so we don't, you know, we want to move, but we also want to be deliberate enough that we're considering information, and we're not impulsive either in what we do. And then when we make that report on the 10th, and as we go through with the regular updates, we will include additional opportunities for parents to provide feedback on the process and their opinions on different things about the educational opportunities at the middle school level for our students.
I was just going to add that the survey does close this evening, but we did send something out through Talk 205 and posted a news item on the website that was also sent to Facebook and Twitter urging people to, you know, weigh in any way they felt was appropriate, that they could give any ideas they wanted.
And I just, I want to be sure and thank you both for your sense of urgency in acting on that. I mean, it is a matter of interpretation, and everyone can interpret things differently. I recognize that. I interpreted differently, and based off my interpretation, you quickly acted and tried to make sure it was clear that all feedback was welcome, whether it was related to the particular recommendations or just general ideas. So again, thank you for being very active on that and taking that feedback and moving forward with it.
Are there other board communications? John?
I wanted to bring this up, I brought it up before, but just a little background. I've been following in the newspaper as the city's approved the building at Addison and First Streets, six stories, transit-oriented development. And this happens as I happened to walk past the large Han Street property, and we're seeing the magnitude of that project, and we're glad that it's moving forward and the city's moving on that. Transit-oriented development is, I guess, somewhat of a change of target or focus in the city's development plans, and I think one of the aldermen kind of capsulated, he says, "Well, let's see how it goes." It kind of targets a younger, more working demographic than some of the other downtown development. And it brought me to thinking about how some of our discussions with the other governing bodies, the city and the Park District, have seemed to have lagged a bit. We have had a lot of discussions about stormwater, we've had regular meetings about stormwater, and I think that's been a good thing. There's been an urgency. I think there's been a corresponding response by the other governing bodies, but I think some of the other topics of discussions that would be beneficial to the different governing bodies have kind of lagged in the wake of that. Tonight, I guess I've been reappointed with Emily. With Emily to the Parks City Schools Committee, and I noted that we haven't met for a long time, for well over a year. As I said, the meetings have been supplanted by the stormwater response, and that's a good thing, but I think what we need to do is, I think we need to restore the broader scope of discussions between the agencies, and I think that would be good. And I think one of the ways of doing that is to restore the structure of those meetings. We used to have quarterly city park schools meetings, but we haven't been to them in a while, and I'm just wondering if the board is supportive of this idea that we get back in the business of talking to our sister agencies and getting in touch with their missions and them in touch with ours, and work a little bit better for the taxpayers and the citizens of this community by reinstituting those. So I'm just wondering if anyone's got any thoughts about that, and if so, just is anyone else interested in asking Dr. Moyer to please reach out to the city and to the Park District and try to reestablish those quarterly meetings with a broader agenda?
John, I think that's a great idea. As you say, we should embrace each other's missions, support one another, and deliver the highest possible value to all the taxpayers in the city for the money they pay those three governmental bodies.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, John. I mean, it's, all of the, all of the governing bodies working together on the overall plan, futures, you know, what do we want? You know, what does the community want? And it's the major entities, elected officials representing the community should be working together to support all of Elmhurst's interests, together as one body. I agree. It's a great idea.
Yeah, and I also am in agreement. I think it's a great way to, we've gotten, there were some urgent issues that we had to take care of for our community, obviously the stormwater, but we also have to be sure we keep sight of our long-term issues, so that was a very, that was a short-term issue that we had to address immediately, and we also want to be sure we're balancing that with a long-term focus on where we're going and what we're looking to do as a united community, which includes parks, the city, and the school board. So I definitely support that.
Okay, sounds good.
Dave, would you?
I will.
We ask you to do a lot, and then just if you could add this to your list, Dave, thank you.
Okay. Any other board communications? Okay. We have upcoming meetings, May 10th, Board of Education meeting, Finance and Operations Committee is being rescheduled. Okay? So we don't have a date on that yet. And then our second Board of Education meeting in May is on May 24th. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.